The first count seven, I would say twenty inches. Yes. I don't know why somehow that's stuck in my head. Anyway, they're doing okay. And then. Yeah. Um. 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 It seems such a big deal. Um. 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 I tell you, that's the simple thing. Um. 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 Yeah, that's true. Um. 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 We almost had two vacancies. Unfortunately. Unfortunately. I'll let me just put the other one in. Well, well, they. If we do with signals and tractors. Oh, yeah. Okay. Next come up. We've only had three waivers and all three vacancies. Yeah. We almost had four, but thank. We didn't.
For your information, I'm going to delay starting the meeting because our staff isn't here just yet. They got caught in traffic and hate to start without them being able to tell us what we're supposed to do.
And as we, Mr. Walden, good evening.
I'm going to have to start leaving at five because it's just so unpredictable.
It's Christmas traffic, make that earlier.
Yeah, yeah, should have anticipated that.
Okay.
Okay, the December tenth meeting of the Sherwood Planning Commission will come to order. Let's call the roll.
Hoskin. Patel.
Aye.
Clef.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Jones.
We cannot review the minutes of the public hearing or the meeting last month because we only have three members present who were at that meeting. So we don't have a quorum sufficient to to adopt it. So it'll be moved to the January meeting. If that will be put in the record, please. Uh, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes or to the agenda? Being none, I call the agenda set. James, you're on.
Yes, our first item is a.
Can I read it first? Just for.
Yes.
Cool. Final plat of lot thirteen, hum addition. Thanks.
Yes, so this application is a little bit of a strange and unorthodox one. Um, the properties along Hum Road are essentially a lot of properties that have slowly and what I would call informally subdivided overtime. And this is, this is a remnant tract that has occurred in this particular location. Uh, when we discussed this, staff, one of the things that we identified was, well, it's, you know, if we don't, if we don't allow them to move forward with a final plat without some type of waiver on half street improvements and those requirements, then we're likely to end up with just a vacant lot because it is a lot for an individual lot to sort of absorb in terms of that cost. So, uh, you would largely end up with just a vacant lot, which I don't think is really what the intent is, uh, even though it doesn't necessarily meet all of the requirements in the way that we would like it to. Uh, what they are requesting is a waiver of half street improvements. They are dedicating, um, right of way along Woodruff, uh, for the sixty foot right of way. Curb and gutter ends about, uh, it's probably, I would say, um, somewhere about twenty-five feet into the property on the western side. Uh, there is a sidewalk that connects on the western side of the property. However, moving to the east, when you get across Hum Road back towards the east along Woodruff, uh, there is no sidewalk on that side of Woodruff on the south side. And there are significant topographic challenges, uh, to placing a future sidewalk on that side. Um, and so there, there is largely sidewalk connectivity for much of this, but it probably would be best be achieved if you went back to Oak Brook and constructed a sidewalk on the north side to connect to, uh, some of that existing sidewalk that's on the north side. So based on those conditions and based on the issues of of this particular property, staff does recommend, uh, moving forward with the final plat with the waiver of the, uh, half street improvements, including, uh, curb and gutter, uh, as well as sidewalk improvements.
On both streets?
Yes, on both streets.
Just making sure.
That, that does seem like a lot for a, this is going to be a residence?
Yeah.
Yes, it's a single family residence.
It seems to be a lot for a residence to do anyway, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we all understood it was both streets. Woodruff and Hum.
Yeah.
Any other questions, James or the applicant? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat with the waivers.
Second.
Would you be specific about the waivers?
Uh, half street improvements on both Woodruff and Hum Road.
Patel.
Aye.
Clef.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Waiver at one oh three Red Bud Road.
Uh, this next request is a, uh, waiver to allow, uh, construction of a fence, uh, in the front yard. Um, this is something that the, the Planning Commission has the authority to grant. Uh, what has occurred in this, on this individual property is you see this property at one oh three here, uh, where the single family residence is, there is a vacant lot, uh, adjacent, uh, that is in between that, the one oh three and the other property. It appears that this vacant lot at one point, uh, belonged to the, the lot that, when you look on the, towards the bottom of the page, uh, the one that is, uh, further to the east. Uh, what they're requesting is to be able to build, uh, privacy fence in the front yard, uh, which is, uh, something that does require a waiver. Um, staff, uh, in this application, uh, decided to defer that to Planning Commission for decision on it.
I'm sorry, who was, who was building the fence to the house on the north?
Uh, the house, the house at one oh three. So the one with, where you see the circle drive.
Yeah, yeah.
That, yes, they're, they're the ones.
We have two persons who have requested to address the commission of Joe Muldoon. Do you wish to speak?
If you have any questions.
Do you wish to speak, Janet?
I'm in, I can.
And if you would state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Janet Muldoon. I'm at, uh, twenty-nine oh nine Waterfront Cove in Sherwood. And this is my parents' property at one oh three Red Bud. And they have been there going on fifty years, forty-nine years. And he, in twenty-one, I believe, purchased the lot next to him. So he's got, uh, riding lawn mowers, trailers and stuff like that, that he's trying to keep out of sight. So what he's wanting to do is put an eight-foot fence on the, I can do my northeast, southwest side there, where you see the little red mark, and then the six-foot in the front and then the eight-foot on the east side, just to block what he has in the back. And for more privacy. So he's got it currently, there's a chain link fence there and he's just wanting to replace it with a privacy fence.
You have any questions, Adam?
It's my understanding there's no blockage of anything, you know, for right of way or anything like that.
No, what it's going to impact is your, is the neighbor's driveway at one oh seven?
No.
Yes, yeah, it is. Trust me.
Well, I mean, well.
Trust me. I'm, I'm in the very, this is, this is the hot button topic and all these folks know it. I'm the person at one oh seven in my situation.
Okay.
And I can't see to get out of my driveway. So, and their fence is at the right of way line, just like you're asking for in a six-foot wind fence.
Okay.
And I drive a full-size pickup. And I can't, I have, my, the tail end of my truck is sitting in the road before I can see. So if you want it at the right of way line, I'm a no. But if you want to discuss moving it back from the right of way line to give your neighbor some room to see, we can, we can discuss.
Yeah.
I'll, it would change my mind.
Do you want, did you understand that? Did you hear what he said?
No, I didn't hear all of it.
Okay. He said that the eight-foot, the six-foot fence in the front will be a blockage of the driveway at one oh seven Red Bud.
Yeah, because it, it, it's, it's, it's basically.
It's fifty foot.
He's got to talk a little bit louder because he's got his ear.
It's, uh, I thought that was measured and it's, it's, it's not in the right of way. It's, uh, that chain link fence was, when that property was grandfathered in or brought into Sherwood, they allowed any kind of fences. But this chain link is deteriorated since the forty-eight years that I've been there. And it needs to come down anyway. And, uh, if you notice in that picture, there's a lot of trees on that lot. They're not there now. I've spent a ton of money just getting those trees parted down and, and gone. And I've still got some leveling to do on the lot. I've got storage trailers, enclosed trailer, open trailer, riding lawn mowers, lawn tractors, wheelbarrows, yard stuff that don't need to be in the sight of, in, inside of, uh, the street. It's a security thing, for one thing. And I, I don't want to lose that twenty-five feet for, uh, for my storage.
I'm not, I'm not totally opposed to discussing some distance, but putting it at the right of way line is going to affect your neighbor's ability to see to get out of his driveway.
Yeah, no, there's.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I, I am the, I am the person that lives at one oh seven in my situation at my very house. I can't see to get out. So if you want it at the right of way line, I'm telling you, I'm going to make a motion here in just a second to deny your waiver. Now, if you want to discuss moving it back ten or fifteen feet from that location, then, then I'm open to.
Now, wait a minute, wait, you're saying it would still be?
It'd be closer to the road than the twenty-five foot limit. You'll get some waiver, but not all that you're asking for is what I'm, I'm, I'm discussing with you. Something like ten foot, but be behind where it is now. That would get, that would give your neighbor enough room that he's not in the street and can still see to get out if he's backing out. Of course, today, his, his Jeep was backed in his drought, in his carport, I noticed, when I drove by. Understand, but.
I, I thought, I thought that chain link fence was on the fifty-foot right of way.
It is on the right of way line. And if you build a six-foot fence right there and an eight-foot one down the side, he's not going to be able to see if he's backing out. I drive a full-size pickup that's twenty-two feet long, okay?
Oh, wow.
I drive a full-size pickup that's twenty-two feet long. I have a neighbor that has a fence at eleven feet off the back of the curb. I can't, I can't see out of my driveway without getting my truck in the road, so. This is, this is a very sensitive matter to me because of my situation. And I, and I sure don't want to agree with it to give it to somebody else. You understand, if you understand where I'm coming from. So if you want to be ten feet behind the right of way line, that way it's twenty-ish feet off the edge of the asphalt, I'm okay with the waiver because that's basically the length of a vehicle. But at the right of way line, I'm a, I'm a hard no. I don't know that what the rest of these folks' opinion is, that, that's, that's just me.
And we have turned down some that have requested right at the right of way.
We had, yes, yeah, so, yeah, that is typically how this commission votes.
Well, from what I understood, that it, it, it did not interfere with sight distance on us.
Not driving down the road. I'm talking about your neighbor being able to get out of his driveway.
Yeah, I think you're saying you could go with ten foot back.
I'd agree to that. That'd be ten feet further away from the road than the chain link is now, basically. That's not the full twenty-five feet off the right of way that the rule says. I mean, that's, that's giving you fifteen more feet than you would have. But not, not being able to build it right back where the right of way line, right where the chain link fence is now at the right of way.
Okay, if you notice in that picture, though, that lot at one oh three was completely privacy fenced. Then when the storms come, last year, it blew down my back fence, which has been replaced.
Right.
And it blew down part of my side fence.
Right.
And I want to, I want to bring the privacy fence from wherever that setback is, that ten foot back up to my privacy fence on the.
Understand, I, I drove, I drove by your property this afternoon, right?
He's talking about this right here, instead of putting it right there, come, you're talking about ten feet back from.
Further away from the road when there the.
Basically about, about where it says sixty-five feet, yeah.
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 Yeah. Yes. Basically ten feet further off the road than where the chain link is now.
Well, yeah, but when it goes up, I want to, I want to put that, um, six foot.
Right here.
Well, no, not all the way back, just to where my existing part of that privacy.
From the house forward.
Or right there, that inch right there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not the, that's, yeah, the, what I'm discussing is stuff that's paralleling the road.
The only issue they're having is this right here.
So we're just going to move that one on the roadside back ten feet?
That's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to see if you'll, you'll agree to. Because.
I don't think I got a choice if that's as much as you can give me.
No, no, I'm, I'm one vote of five. I'm just telling you right off the bat, if, I'm, I'm a no. I, you got four more votes, they may vote yes and outvote me, I don't know.
Could you go five feet?
No, I, it, I'm, I'm telling you, my, my whole reason is my vehicle is like twenty feet long, right? Anybody that drives a full-size pickup is like twenty feet long. I mean, I know your neighbor drives a Jeep Gladiator right now, I saw it in his carport today, but, you know, that, that's, that's where that number comes from because you're, that would put you roughly twenty-ish feet off the edge of the asphalt. Is, that's how I got there.
Okay, I don't guess I got a choice.
What, again, I'm one vote of five, okay? So these other four may vote a different way tonight, but.
Is there any other discussion on this?
Well, let's have a vote.
Sorry, I can't explain something. So what he's saying is he'll vote no, but these others could vote yes or they could vote no. And if they say no, then back it up ten feet and call it good, right?
Well.
I would say something is better than nothing.
Yeah.
So.
Something is better than nothing if he's just going to use it for a storage.
We can't do it again for a year, right?
Well, yeah, he mows the lawn like twice a week and he keeps it up and everything. And then sometimes the neighbors, right, because he's out there mowing so much.
Because he posts it up so social media.
I.
Four times a week.
No.
I, yeah, so.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion of allowing a waiver of fifteen feet.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Patel.
Aye.
Clef.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Waiver of fifteen feet is pro.
So that puts me ten foot back, right?
Yes, sir, that's, that's, that's saying the same thing. That's just the way we have to say it, yes, sir. That's basically ten feet from where it is now.
Okay.
All right.
Amendment to the Sherwood zoning card, nope, to the Sherwood zoning code regarding restaurants.
Okay, so at the November meeting, we presented a discussion item.
If you would introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm Besquito, I'm with Garver, I joined the urban planning team and so I get to, to work with you guys now. Um, at the November meeting, uh, we did discuss, we presented a discussion item that was, uh, regarding zoning code revisions related to restaurant uses. And at that time, you approved that we should move forward with research and preparing the proposed code revision. So this is what you have in your packets and what we have here. This is exhibit A, which, um, would be attached to the draft ordinance should it move forward. So what we did was we reviewed all of the different dining and food service options that are currently in the code. We looked at definitions, we looked at uses that were in the scheduled use table, uh, and we looked at all of the different aspects of those. And we found that there were some very specific references to things like fast food restaurants. And then there were some things that weren't even addressed at all. Um, so what we did was we developed three categories of food service establishments. And we created or we modified existing definitions that are more comprehensive for each of those. And they're cumulative as you move forward. So we created a definition, a comprehensive definition for a dine-in restaurant, and then a pickup window restaurant that also allows for dine-in, and then a drive-through restaurant, which allows for both of the previous. Um, in addition to those new definitions or modified definitions that we created, we added some additional ones that further clarify these uses. Uh, drive-through was not previously defined, so we actually created a definition for what a drive-through operation is. Drive-in was defined, but obviously the model is more typical of a drive-through. So we recommend replacing, uh, drive-in with the drive-through definition that you have there, which would of course include that drive-in use. We did make one clarification, um, of the, the bakery. It was not previously defined, but it was included in the use table. So we recommend, um, creating a bakery definition that is specific to a wholesale or a manufacturer use. And then from there, any retail sale of a bakery item like a donut shop would fall into the restaurant or the, the food service use, whether it be dine-in, drive-through, pickup. So that, that distinction we recommend. Um, again, we looked very clearly or very carefully at the code to remove any definitions that would then be included in these more comprehensive categories of food service definitions. And we also reflected those changes in the use table. And I think that pretty much covers what you have there. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question, please. In the city council meeting, there was some discussion about a menu, an exterior menu at, at the location that was being discussed. And is that addressed in here? I was just reading through it, I couldn't see that.
Um, I don't know that we mentioned menu board in any way, but the drive-through definition is meant to, and if, if, if we need to clarify it further, we can, but it is, it is intended to include the use of ordering in the line and receiving the product in the line and never exiting the vehicle, whether that be from a menu board or a speaker system or something like that. Is that what you're asking?
Well, is there a category or a definition whereby a person could call in and order and there's a pickup window, but they're not in a line outside of cars that are looking at a menu and then ordering?
Yes, so that is how the pickup window, the, um.
Toward the bottom of the list.
Sorry, the, yeah, the, the new, um, the, the last definition under the following terms to be added, restaurant pickup window, is where they could order their, they could place their order via telephone or maybe through a, a mobile app. And then they could pick it up, yes. You're welcome. Other questions?
Okay, this calls for a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak to this? If you would, give your name and address, please.
Uh, Carla Zadorian, twelve oh four Coolhurst Avenue. Um, and I'm here just to speak positively towards this, uh, movement that we're going on defining the restaurants. Um, I did some research and looked around at the zoning codes in Bryant and Cabot and, you know, all the places around us. And they all kind of defined, um, something like this, where they have the drive-through broken out and then they have it, um, where it's a dine-in and then the drive-through, the drive-through window, I think is a really nice addition to this as well because it creates faster moving traffic as well. Um, or like, it doesn't sit at the window and you're not trying to decide what you want, you already have an order. Um, but yeah, I was just coming up here to say, uh, for it, so, yep.
Anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, I call the public hearing closed. Questions, comments?
I have one question. Um, I know you've defined bakery wholesale and then bakery. Um, can you like give us some example, like are you talking about Dunkin' Donuts might be one of the bakery, right? But what about the wholesale?
So I think, I think the intent here was most, and, and I use the word, I use donut shop because that's the most common one that you see. Most of those type of retail sales incorporate a drive-through. Most of those type of retail sales incorporate a drive-through, whereas you might have a bakery that, um, where you might order a birthday cake that might not have a drive-through that, I mean, that's, that would be a retail. That may not be a good example. But what we're trying to do is separate, um, something that might generate less traffic, where you might not have customers coming and going, um, frequently through the day. So, so a manufacturing facility, which would obviously be a larger, more intense use, and then maybe a wholesale facility, which would just be selling larger, um, orders with less traffic. I think that was what we were trying to make the distinction, between a smaller retail operation and a larger wholesale or manufacturer. Does that help?
Would Two Sisters, that's off of Keel, will count it as a, a fit in that description?
I'm not familiar with it.
I mean, there's no drive-through on that one, but it's a-
Are they retail? Do they sell directly to the public?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Then that would be considered a restaurant. And, and it's intended, it doesn't have to have a drive-through. Just separating the retail bakery out means they could operate as a dine-in only. They could operate at any level, provided it fit with the zoning per this proposed scheduled use table. Does that make, does that help?
I have a, a follow-up question on that. Uh, the only way you would know if a retail bakery counted is if you read the definition of, well, basically, in the definition section. Otherwise, you wouldn't know it.
Well, and we-
What we've got going here kind of is, you're, in this case, you're getting away from the SIC code and being a little bit more descriptive about what you're including. And my suggestion would be to go ahead and have a definition for bakery retail and make it real, and make it a separate item in the, the table of uses. That way, it's clear that it would be permitted or where it's permitted.
Okay. Um, we did, um, we, we could, we could look at that. We could also look at further clarifying, um, the bakery use that is, that remains in the table as, you know, labeling it as wholesale only or manufacturer only, if you wanted to do that. We did include in the, um, I believe we did include in one of the restaurant definitions that a bakery is included. I can confirm that, um, but-
You did.
Okay, okay. But if, if you prefer the other way, we can definitely-
I just think to make it clearer in the use table, that there's two different kinds.
Okay, go ahead.
If it would be easier, because it, it is already reflected in the use table as bakery wholesale, um, that we could just change that definition of bakery to bakery comma wholesale.
Yeah.
Um, and then, and then that would eliminate any confusion. Honestly, I, I don't know that we'll get a lot of-
No.
Wholesale bakeries besides maybe Hostess or some-
No, but that-
I, I wish Jackson Cookie Company would come back. I wish, I never got rid of them, the Wafers, but, you know, that's, it is what it is.
But if you, if you use that as the term you're defining, that matches the use table, besides the definition does say, but the retail sale of baked goods is prohibited, so.
But if we call it out at the beginning of the definition, that might-
Yes.
Prevent any confusion. Okay, we could, we could make that change.
Only other observation is, I'm kind of curious, why is, why are these things conditional in the office zone?
These things? Which things specifically?
Well, in my research in the past, half of all of the uses that are permitted in office zones are conditional. And I've never quite understood the reasoning for that. And I wonder why, in this case, why, why are we continuing them to be conditional? Why aren't they either permitted or not permitted?
Okay, are you, would you, are you saying they should just be permitted in lieu of causing that additional step?
What's more likely in my mind is that they'd be an accessory use. You probably wouldn't find a standalone bakery in an office zone, but you might find it as part of an, an office complex.
Okay. Um, would you prefer to move back to that more accessory use model?
I'll leave that up to the commission.
Okay, okay. We can definitely modify it whichever way you think would be most useful.
Any more questions?
Is there a motion to approve? And what do you, would you include in the motion?
You have one more. So, you, you're in favor of the restaurant dine-in and restaurant pickup window being by right and no to? Is that what, is that what your comment's about? Which?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, just making sure that's what I understood you were saying. Okay, all right. Motion to approve with the definition changed there, wholesale by adding the word bakery and changing the use table to allow restaurant dine-in and restaurant pickup window by right and no to.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Patel?
Hi.
Cluff?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Williams?
Uh, discussion building sign standards?
Um, based on our rush to get this done, we kind of put the, the building design standards at the back burner on that. So, if we can, just put it, uh, as a continuance on the, the agenda for next month. We'll dive into that a little bit further.
So, we're tabling it?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second. Motion to table and a second?
Patel?
Hi.
Cluff?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
And the planning commission report?
Yes, so, over, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, in terms of looking at all of the applications that we have, um, examined over the last year, we've had five site plans that have come in through review, uh, one of which was, uh, withdrawn. Some of those are still in process, uh, but you'll note there, uh, probably the highlight, major victory of the year would be, uh, the Aldi location at, uh, ninety-two fifteen, uh, Highway one oh seven. Uh, we received seven, um, rezonings, one of which was withdrawn, uh, and some that have been, uh, approved and some have been amended. Two conditional use applications. Uh, one was at eighty-eight, uh, oh-one Highway one oh seven for the gas station. Uh, that was approved. Uh, the one at eighty-nine hundred Highway one oh seven for the residential care facility was denied, uh, because the, the code was amended to allow it otherwise. So, it didn't, it was no longer necessary. Uh, there were two preliminary plats, Trammell Woods Estates, or Trammell Woods Subdivision, excuse me, and WP Subdivision. Uh, additionally, we had six final plats, uh, and two replats as well. I will say this as well, um, the end of twenty twenty-four, it also marks, uh, a little bit of a sad moment for me. Mr. Middleton is going to be rotating off of the, the planning commission. When I started, when I came back to Little Rock in two thousand seven, um, I, I was working on a project, uh, for the city of DeQueen. Uh, and my boss at the time tasked Mr. Middleton with overseeing my work. And that was my, that was my first introduction. Um, and I, I got to learn and appreciate, uh, his meticulous nature at that, at that time. I have greatly valued your friendship, uh, both in a professional manner and a personal manner over these, uh, I guess-
Couple of years.
Yeah, over the, over the last seventeen years. Um, in that, especially the, the last seven years, uh, being on the planning commission. In twenty seventeen, I, I had reached out to Mr. Middleton and said, why don't you, why don't you reach out to the mayor and think about, uh, coming on the, the-
So, y'all, it's his fault.
Uh, at that time. Um, but Mr. Middleton's service, uh, has gone well beyond what you normally see with a, with a planning commissioner. Back in the day, back in the, those late twenty-tens, um, Mr. Middleton just kind of saw the state of the, the zoning map. Uh, we were at a state where oftentimes, we would have to go, uh, talk to Paul and say, Paul, you know, there's, there's, something's not adding up on the map. And Paul would say, well, no, yeah, that was, that was rezoned from C-one to C-three back in, you know, two thousand six. And lo and behold, he'd go in the files and, and pull it out. Um, so, Mr. Middleton jumped in, had first helped us correct a lot of that, helped us with so many of our records, uh, and everything, helped us with re-codifying our, our code. Really, in a lot of ways, functioned as staff, um, for, for the city, uh, and helped us in so many ways and that are, have been seen and unseen. And I just want to say, I appreciate, uh, all of that and appreciate, uh, your service to the city and everything that you've done.
Well, you're very kind. Uh, I did want to announce this is my last commission meeting. I have been working for, hmm, sixty years. That's not counting when I had a morning and afternoon paper route in fifth and sixth grade. And all of that's been in the public. And a couple of months ago, I became a great-grandfather. And that, uh, changed my whole attitude about things, giving my family history about how old we tend to be and how often we get to meet our great-grandchildren. It's time for me to be out of the public eye. I will still be a resident of Sherwood. I will still be looking, be helping. I think you have a really good staff. You should take advantage of them. If my only advice to you all, ask questions. That's how you learn. If you get a chance to get any advanced training through the municipal league or through the Arkansas chapter of the planning association, take it. This is work, but it's really important stuff. I, has been a really neat ride for me. I've learned a lot. I hope I've done some good, but thank you, James. That, that's, yeah, I did some work.
Well, it, it's my turn now.
Can I interrupt you, cuz I need to leave, like, a minute ago. And so, I want-
Go ahead.
Thank you. We came in the same day. We got sworn in the same day. It's been a great pleasure sitting right here beside you since you took the chairman role six years ago, so, six years ago now. But you will be, you will be missed, so enjoy, enjoy your family time.
And you can't leave yet, because I need to get a picture of all y'all together.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the city of Sherwood. Um, we are so thankful for everything that you have done. Um, I was surprised when you came to my office and told me what you told me. Um, you really have been a treasure. I appreciated you as a council member and even more so as a mayor. So, I've asked you to stay involved, and you better stay involved. So, I have something for you.
Can we, can we do the, can we do the, can we do the motion adjourn?
Yes.
All right. So, moved.
I'll second.
Thanks.
So, we have a plaque on behalf of the city. And if y'all will please gather. Well, I'll, I'll get that, all right? So, make sure, y'all come up. James? You are part of this. And you gotta hold it up so you can see.
All right, everybody ready?
So appreciate it.
Okay, nobody go anywhere. Patel?
Hi.
Cluff?
Hi.
Middleton?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi.
Break.
Steve, why don't we send y'all the up there one and see what happens?
That was so fast.
I'll get that changed, so, okay, cool.